Face down then, alright.
Chris don't know where your speaker is, you know where your speaker is.
If we have seven oh five, I'd like to call the September eleventh, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Person County Board of Commissioners to order this time and ask Commissioner Clayton if he would lead us in an invocation.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, please be with us as we go about this meeting tonight. Please be with our young men and women in all the situations that they find themselves in with the storms and things this weekend. Please remember all of the people that were involved in nine eleven. Most people remember where they were on that day. And a lot of people lost loved ones, and it changed our whole country. And we ask that you be with all of those. In our holy name we pray, amen.
Commissioner, per year, lead us.
Alright.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is discussion adjustment approval of the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion or comments?
Motion for approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non motion carried. Item number one on the agenda is a proclamation that was presented Saturday morning at the local Veterans Memorial here on Morgan Street. And I substituted for, it's getting to be a habit, for Chairman Kendrick, who we understand where he is and what he's doing, no problem with that. But we had a joint proclamation between the city of Roxborough and Person County. And so I would like to read that as it was read Saturday morning. Whereas the unprovoked attacks of September eleventh, two thousand one upon America by foreign terrorists have thrust the United States and other countries into a war it never envisioned militarily or diplomatically. And whereas the challenges facing all the civilized people of the world as they relate to war on terrorism will not end until those fanatics responsible are eliminated or brought to justice. And whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations now and forever. And whereas world opinion needs to be, needs to remain focused upon the eradication of these inhumane acts perpetrated around the globe. And whereas on way to accomplish this is to never forget that those innocent victims did not die in vain. And whereas America can fight back by reminding the world that the deaths of these people will always be remembered and that they will never, they will forever be loved. And whereas a noble and appreciate, an appreciated way to accomplish this is through the annual celebration of their living. And whereas the commemoration should be conducted each September eleventh throughout the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the demonstration of America's resolve and perseverance to win the war on terrorism, the advancement of responsible citizenship, the encouragement and patriotism and love of country, the poignant remembrance of those innocent victims who died September eleventh, two thousand one, as heroes, one and all. Now therefore, be it resolved, as the mayor of the city of Roxborough and chairman of the Person County Commissioners are jointly issuing this proclamation to memorialize those men, women, and children who lost their lives. And be it further resolved that this proclamation be publicized for all to see and know that the citizens of Roxborough and Person County remember with eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly and without cause and pointlessly taken from them on September eleventh, two thousand one. May they forever rest in peace and abide in their memories. Respectfully submitted and approved on this ninth day of September two thousand seventeen. Signed, Mayor Roxborough Merlin Newell and County Commission Chair Tracy Kendrick. Item number two on the agenda is one that we do with great pleasure. We have here a resolution of appreciation for Randy Long. Randy, could you come forward, please? Good to see you, sir. And I'll read this resolution that has been signed by our Chairman, Mr. Kendrick. Resolution of appreciation. Whereas Randy Long has served the people of Person County during his tenure working for Person County Arts, Parks, and Recreation Department as a park maintenance technician. And whereas Randy Long has served the citizens of Person County with honor, integrity, sincerity, and dedication, providing accurate, concise services for eight years, May two thousand nine through August two thousand seventeen. And whereas Randy Long has earned the respect and admiration of all who have known him and worked with him throughout his career. And whereas the county of Person recognizes the many contributions Randy Long has made to the county and offers him sincere best wishes for his retirement. Now therefore, I, Tracy L. Kendrick, Chairman of the Person County Board of Commissioners, do hereby extend this resolution of appreciation to Randy Long for continually striving to make Roxborough and Person County a better place to live and work. Adopted this the eleventh day of September two thousand seventeen, signed by Chairman Kendrick and Clerk Brenda Reeves. Congratulations. I just want to thank the county of Person for having me the opportunity to work for hand up some recreational jobs. I mean, we should gather a lot. I'm not too far away, I come by saying right off. I just, I am a rich man, too. I just love this county. Hope I've done a good job for you.
You did. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Randy, I never seen without his head on.
Always recognize.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is informal comment period, where we have ten minutes set aside for informal comments. We have two signed up to speak, and so we all have about five minutes each. First to speak is Philip Gillis, one twenty-five Jack Brand Road, Roxborough, NC.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of you for your time here. But I'll first want to state I'm not here in my usual role as a board member of Board of Education. I'm here as a resident of a community that I absolutely love, and that is Allensville. I also don't want to get too deep into the funding because everyone now comes to me with questions when dealing with the county. And everyone asks me, well, what, how do we make up for this three million dollars? And then when you start to spend money on this landfill? I don't know. I'm not as familiar with that budget. I'm familiar with the school budget. I'm here for my community. I'm here to address a couple of simple things, noise and trash in our community. But I first want to take you back to a few weeks ago when I came to the meeting where you were working and addressing the airplane club. In that meeting, you talked about how it was a person's right to have peace and quiet and not be disturbed on their property. And these were for essentially vacant lots as well as church. The community around what is now known as the former landfill of Person County is not just vacant lots and church. We have a church basically on each end of the road. On one road and looking strictly at the block around it, you have approximately nine houses, three farms, a fox pen, a cemetery, and a pond. Going down the other road, you have twenty houses, two farms, and a business. The third road has approximately thirty houses, a farm, and a business. The fourth road going directly around it has twenty-one houses, two farms, and a shop. So we're not talking about vacant lots here. We're talking about a community that is built up because approximately half of those houses have been built up since the closing of the old landfill. That's nearly a hundred homes that are going to be impacted by this specifically. Heard people address, talking about it devalues the area where the landfill currently is, and just putting it back in Allensville, but then it also has an effect on Allensville there as well. The current dump has a major road built for it and was built up to accommodate this. We have a small road leading on Cedar Road Church Road, and we're now going to push all of the trucks essentially for the county through that. And it's just, the community, I'm not sure can deal with that because the time it was built, it was a different time period, basically. We'd love to see a different model put in place, perhaps maybe more recycling, before we just suddenly close the landfill. People ask, come up to me with ideas about it, why they will come up to the Board of Education guy, I don't know. But they come to me with it and tell me, you know, do we take Person County's trash for a year or two until we can fix some other model? I don't know. I'm just here to present my, to present the ideas from Allensville. Another one is everyone likes to assure us that it's just a transfer station. That makes us completely nervous because we understand you're getting proposals for it, but if you add a few, I would call them courtesy dumpsters, you add something else, and we, suddenly off we go, and we've got a bigger problem that we're dealing with. Looking, trying to recoup some of that loss that would be from the loss of the current landfill, you of course would have to look for the cheapest way to deal with the transfer station, which once again is going to create an issue. If you're looking for the cheapest, you'll get the cheapest. Allensville and specifically the eastern part of our county, we've already done our part in the field, dealing with Mount Tersa and Allensville. We've housed both of them for a while. We've done our part. And just to say to open it back up in Allensville, no matter if it's a transfer station or not, it's a lot of questions that people would like to have answered. And right now, I don't even know what, how to start with an answer at this point. So I would like to thank you for your time. I hope you will make the best decision for our county, which includes both Mount Tersa and Allensville. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sheriff, Jerry Jones?
Good evening.
Evening, sir.
I too want to speak with the opening of the transfer station on a different light. You know, we use the old landfill as our firing range. With this consideration of, you know, hopefully that can remain open, we did some rough figures, and our training budget alone would probably get hit by twenty thousand dollars if we have to travel out of town, just in manpower. And we haven't even priced what somebody else may charge us. Like I said, if it does go that route, I hope there's some way that the county can work together to where we can just keep using that, you know, in a safe manner. There'd be a whole lot of traffic there at one point. We do all of our qualifications there, and we actually done the last couple of years. Especially last year, we did it rotating people in and out where we didn't even pay the overtime to do it. We actually would rearrange people's shifts and do it during a regular scheduled workday, which saved us tremendous amount of money in our budget and with mandated trainings that we have to do. The city of Roxborough's been using it for, ever since, for many years, pretty much since we've been there, so it would also affect them. Just wanted us to bring to everybody's attention and during this consideration, you know, to see if we can either keep it as a dual purpose or, you know, just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda is discussion adjustment or approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any discussion or adjustments to the consent agenda?
Just a clarification, Heidi. Item F, resolution amended the Economic Development Commission.
Got it. Did you have a specific question?
Yes.
Or just clarifying what they're asking?
Clarifying.
I think my understanding is that they are wanting to change the article that specifically addressed the secretary or treasurer. The secretary that they are referring to in that actually is the staff administrative position, does not report directly to the commission, reports to the Economic Development Director. So Stuart was asking to have that particular item removed and revised in the resolution to reflect that the administrative person would report to the director.
And was that voted on by EDC?
It was approved by the EDC, I think, that adjustment. I can't remember if they had a consent agenda or if there was discussion. I think it was part of their consent agenda.
It was.
Okay.
So there was not discussion about it, as I recall, but that's the change, somewhat minor.
Move for approval?
We have a motion for approval, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cut that one. That was an aye. Sending kind of horse there, Tracy.
Yeah, just trying to help out.
That's fine. Next is new business, item number four, resolution of support to dedicate a section of NC Highway fifty-seven in Person County to commemorate the service of World War One veteran First Lieutenant Guy J. Winstead. And I see my name by that. Just briefly, for almost this entire year, I've worked with DOT and family members to have a section of Highway fifty-seven north set aside as a dedicated section of road for Lieutenant or First Lieutenant Guy J. Winstead, who died in World War One, in France, for that matter. And we are near the point now of having all the documentation required by DOT to make this happen. And it's a very honorable and a worthy cause for this brave young Personian that acted so bravely and gave his life in France during World War One. In fact, soon after graduating from NC State University. So quite a, quite an honor to even be able to ask for this highway to be dedicated to him. But one stipulation's in there is that we, or the county commission board, vote unanimously to pay the two thousand dollar fee to DOT for, for that process to be completed, and then have the minutes from this meeting transferred to DOT as further evidence of that. So any questions that I might be able to answer or, or a motion? Anything we need to say or do?
Just taking out a contingency?
Could use your contingency fund for the two thousand dollars.
Move for approval?
Have a motion to approve this request, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. No dissentance, okay. Okay, item number five is Person County Aging Plan, Ms. Harper in Harding, I believe.
You going first or her?
You are, but I'm going to interject here. This is Jillian Harding, otherwise known as the AAA Director, the Area Agency on Aging Director for our region. And she has spearheaded this year-long plan for aging, which I'm going to let her explain.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, good to have you.
I have three copies of the Person County Aging Plan on the back, it's a signature page for your Chairman's sign. If you want to share them or pass them around and look at them. We started the Person County Aging Plan in February of last year. And with the Area Agency on Aging, our agency is mandated to have a four-year plan. And so we've modeled this plan after our agency four-year plan. It is approved by the Division of Aging and Adult Services. And we have put together this, these two goals for Person County. And it all started with a survey that we passed out to the residents in the community. Anyone of any age could take the survey. And we asked the top three aging issues for Person County. From there, we put together a steering committee, and Mr. Clayton was a part of that committee, Robert Allen was part of the committee, Mayne Al, we had several people part of it. And this is what we came up with. The Aging Plan is titled because all the while we've conceived for miles and miles expanding and sustaining services for older adults in Person County. I need to use this. Okay. And you have your brand-new senior center. And this past year, the Division of Aging did come down and was recertified as a Center of Excellence. And you keep that certification for five years?
Three years for this time.
Okay. So a little background on the Area Agency. We call it the AAA for short. It's part of the National Aging Network and a part of the Older Americans Act that was signed into law in nineteen sixty-five. We're housed within the CAR-TAR Regional Council of Governments in Henderson. And it's a regional planning organization that serves twenty-one local governments in five counties within the Triangle North area. And then the AAA staff work with advisory committees in such county to study the needs of older adults and plan for services to meet the needs. So our goal is to enable people sixty and better to live in their community of choice for as long as possible with the quality of life. Within our agency, we also have a long-term care ombudsman, and she does go into the long-term care facilities and advocates for people living in institutions. The development of the plan, we had the Aging Leadership Planning Team that convened. We also had the demographic information that we get from Aging and Adult Services in Raleigh. And the earliest data we had was from two thousand fourteen. We also had two public forums last fall that were at the senior center, the old senior center, and then we had the surveys. So we had a lot of information going into this plan to put together. And the mission statement that the county Aging Leadership Planning Team came up with was to expand, expand and sustain services for the aging population of Person County. And right here you have an aging profile in front of you, the two thousand fourteen and two thousand thirty. And this is the population for Person County, thirty-nine thousand in two thousand fourteen, and we're looking at a forty thousand jump. But look at your demographics from zero to seventeen, you're going to lose some people in that age bracket. You're going to have a lot of growth in the sixty-plus and the sixty-five-plus and the eighty-five-plus as well. And that forty-five to fifty-nine, even though it has an eighteen percent drop, those people also, whenever they turn into sixty and age into services, they'll be eligible for our programs. So the three, out of the three goals, or the three identified issues, the planning committee chose two. The first one was transportation. The goal is to empower older adults and their families to make informed decisions and easily assess transportation options and services. And the first thing we wanted to do was reframe public transportation and to develop and distribute marketing materials to community agencies as well as consumers. And we have some measures for that, for those strategies. Our second objective was to educate local leaders and staff from different agencies about the options available for public transportation and participate in community engagement events within the county to share information about transportation, and then also develop alternate methods of transportation where Pats cannot serve. And we have measures to accommodate those strategies. The third objective was to maximize collaboration with service providers to expand existing transportation services. And we want to work with Pats and add a new route to the senior center. I don't know if that's been done yet, has that been done?
Tab, I think it has been. We've talked about it.
Okay, that's good. We're talking, alright. The second identified issue was caregiving services. And we want to educate and empower caregivers to provide quality care for their care recipients. The first objective is to provide outreach for existing caregiver programs in Person County, such as Family Caregiver Support Program and Consumer Directed Services. Family Caregiver Support, we fund through the Home and Community Care Block Grant through the Aging Network and the Consumer Directed Services as well. We'd like to coordinate a community forum where we can talk about and provide information and outreach about caregiving services, and then utilize local media for outreach. Our second objective is to expand the virtual dementia tour and aging sensitivity in Person County, and this will come from our agency as well. Right now, we are in the process of interviewing and hiring the Family Caregiver Support Program specialists, but this person would be in charge of providing the virtual dementia tours. And that's just a few minutes in a life of someone living with dementia or Alzheimer's disease. The third objective is to maximize collaboration within service providers through the use of technology, social media, and community events. And that's just sharing information, sharing outreach events and things like that. Objective two point four is to explore new programs and opportunities for caregivers in the county. We want to start working with faith-in-action grants to provide some startup money to develop community programs. Volunteer assistance, we want to reach out to NC BAM, the Baptist Aging Ministries, determine the need for grandparents raising grandkids. And that's another program that would be administered from our agency to this county. And then work with the Division of Aging and Adult Services in Raleigh and other appropriate agencies about the feasibility of opening up an adult day program. Everything in the Aging Plan is spelled out and expanded upon, but that's just an overview of the plan. And we have our Aging Leadership Planning Team members in front of you, and then the CAR-TAR Area Agency on Aging staff that was able to put this together. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Questions, anyone? Thank you very much, and I commend you for having a plan. So many, so many times we, we go about and jump into things, and we do not have a plan in place. And now, what are your benchmarks there and timeframe to go through this?
We didn't really set a tri, we didn't want to say three-year, two-year, five-year plan. We wanted to try to start implementing these incrementally, working, we had great inter-agency cooperation with this. Everyone came to the table with great ideas and big concerns. Everyone's eyes are wide open to the Silver tsunami. I know you guys are tired of me saying that, but it's true, and you're right, we've got to plan for it.
What did you say, Person County is the seventh?
In the state of North Carolina, the top seven of people looking to retire within the state.
I think at your winter planning meeting, Sybil made a good point about Chatham County. We can, we can follow models like that and try to become a place that entices folks who want to retire here, hopefully folks with money. You know, we've got, we've got two lakes, we've got close access to two major medicals, so we've got a good start there. We've got absolutely fabulous senior center, which brings me to why I'm here. So we've been kind of quiet lately, you haven't heard a lot from us because we've gotten adjusted. And I want to let y'all know that of course you're invited to come to the senior center at any time. There is something going on there constantly. I joked with Jimmy at the COGS last meeting that we're kind of running out of room. Sort of kind of. We, we have so many new activities and groups meeting there that it's wonderful. You know, we're trying to schedule and accommodate as many diverse activities as we can. We've gone from serving about seventy of people on site over here to some days, close to two hundred or a little better. So it's, it's been good. So I do have a PowerPoint. Okay, Inspiration Point, also known as Person County Senior Center. And that's, a lot of people have said things like, it's inspiring, we feel so good, we feel so proud, you know, I'm inspired to come and learn how to do this, I'm inspired to reach out and help people. So we're thrilled. Got it. So it looks like we made it. There's our sign, there's our logo. We try to get it out as much as possible for everyone to see. We're well aware that this was a total community effort, and certainly we could not have done it without the commissioner's support. And we just want you to know that we are very appreciative. So to add a little perspective, one twenty-one Depot Street, cramped, not up to code, obviously when a lady that's about five-three is putting her barbells up and touching the ceiling. when a lady that's about 5'3" is putting her barbells up and touching the ceiling. But we made it work, sort of, kind of, while we could. Till Dale condemned us. 309 Long Avenue, packing to move. We're not gonna say anything more about that. Okay. Seniors know how to make it work. So, we weren't just constantly coming here and talking to y'all and writing letters to the editor. We were doing a lot of fundraising. We sold a lot of stew, and we have a gorgeous computer lab now that is used every day by seniors. We have a young man who's in IT with a local company, Spun Tech, coming in once a week and doing tech classes for free for our seniors. Smartphones, tablets, computers. It's wonderful. We have a food pantry. A lot of people don't know that, that we make sure our Meals on Wheels clients are gonna have food when we're closed, or other seniors, or really, anyone in the community. So, the mission for the Person County Senior Center is to respond to older individuals' diverse needs and interests, enhance their dignity, support their independence, and encourage their involvement with the senior center and the community. And gentlemen, that's what we're doing. So, this is now. We've got a game room with billiards, card games, Wii teams. What used to be the beauty salon is what we call a large group room. Seven different group exercise classes. Some of them be daily. Four different bridge groups, and more goes on in that room. Here's some pictures of things going on. This is a early morning cheer exercise. We have so many people coming in to exercise in these groups in the morning that we've had to offer an 8:30 and a 9:30 class. When I left the center, there was an exercise class going on then. This is one of our billiards players. They were so happy when we got the billiards table out of exile. We have a couple of guys that are there every day, and they're running clinics. They're not hustling, they're running clinics. They assured me. So, the gym. Workout, volunteer, workout. We have volunteers. You've heard me say, we use over 100 volunteers a month. There's always a volunteer during senior center hours. In that fitness room, there's always a staff somewhere in the building. And these are just two of our really great volunteers laughing it up. Different passions and different interests. You've got the Wednesday Ladies Bridge Group, got monthly basket week. And just to give you a couple of ideas of what's going on, playing and learning, staying healthy is important. We have whiteboards in each big section where we keep things on there all the time. And as you can see, it's not just about exercising. There it says, "Senior yoga coming soon." Well, we don't just have one yoga class, we have two now. Restorative yoga, once a week in the morning, Silver Sneakers Yoga in the afternoon. Both instructors are volunteer.
Belly dance. Belly dance.
Belly dancing is on Tuesdays, yes. It's energetic. We also have a lot of health education and screenings going on every week. So, special celebrations. Today was Music Monday. I don't know if you've ever heard of that, but the first Monday, it's not a holiday of the month, we have anywhere from six to 12 musicians come in. They call themselves the Next Time Out Band, but they're pick-up. They play everything from bluegrass to gospel to beach to rock. You name it, they play it. We have a good time. We celebrate anybody that wants to come's birthday that month. And it was pretty, pretty wild in there this morning. Here's some folks, I think this, I don't remember if this was July or August, celebrating birthdays. More opportunities, cards. We now have, in addition to four bridge groups, we have a bid-wish group, we have a spades group, we have a pinochle group. And this isn't cards, but we've got people campaigning for Vajon. So, a lot going on. Dancing with your sweetheart. This is Mr. and Mrs. Dolian and Jean Duncan. They're pretty smooth dancers, I have to tell you. Volunteering, again, we use over 100, and I think that's very important for seniors to have an outlet to give back to their community. Picture on the left, you have three longtime Meals on Wheels volunteers. The petite lady, Dr. Eileen Maikett, recently was nominated and won the Golden Key Award for Health Volunteerism through United Way. She has been delivering Meals on Wheels and doing many other things for the senior center since 1979. Some of the people she delivers to are 20 years younger than she is. I'm not allowed to say how old she is, but... In the summer, we encourage families to deliver Meals on Wheels and to do other things, to give our regulars a little break and give those children a chance to see something they might not see and to be a part of something. Here's one of our favorite Meals on Wheels, and she told me I could put her picture up there, 'cause she thought she looked pretty good. And this is Dr. Maikett delivering to her. And finally, probably one of the most important things of the Person County Senior Center is that it brings us all together, no matter who you are, who you serve, where you're from. We all get together, don't we, Jimmy?
Yep.
That's Henry Daniels, by the way. And that's just a brief overview of what we've been doing at the Person County Senior Center. And so, I hope you guys will come visit us and let us show you how grateful we are and the wonderful things that are happening and what's going on with the seniors in Person County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, I wanna say one word. I would like for Jill, I'd like Mr. Allen to stand up too, 'cause I went to the thing at the head over here at the old ones when they were doing it. And we had a crowd in there for the exercises she was talking about. I just wanna thank y'all, appreciate you putting your time in. Jillian runs, she runs all over the region, but she took, she's taking a lot of time to come up to Person County and put a lot of time in.
She's a huge asset for us.
I wanna thank y'all, and of course, we always thank them.
Do we need to approve this plan?
Yes, we do.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion on the floor to approve the Person County Aging Plan as presented. All in favor, well, in a discussion. In a discussion. Sorry. No discussion? All in favor say aye. So, I approve. Thank you so much. Okay. Item number six, on the agenda, sale of surplus property or resolution authorizing upset bid process for Old Senior Center and Old Hotel Estate.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
This is a follow-up item from your previous discussions about the sale of surplus property. We are at the point where we're ready to begin the upset bid process, and that will begin when you adopt the resolutions that you see in your agenda packet. The resolutions outline the upset bid process. And I'm gonna, you don't need to, according to Ron, we don't have to read the resolutions. You just need to adopt them should you choose to move forward with it. So, I'm gonna go ahead and highlight what's in the resolution for the public. So, as you know, we have received bids for both the Old Senior Center and the Old Hotel Lot. Currently, the highest bid for the Old Senior Center is $500 from Chairman Kendrick, and the highest bid for the Old Hotel Lot is $22,500 from Mr. John Dixon. So, at this point, again, once you adopt the resolution, our clerk will then advertise in the newspaper. She'll be able to get that in this next Saturday's newspaper. And then, if there are individuals who wish to bid and upset those initial offers, they will have 10 days to do so. And that means their bid needs to be back to the clerk by September 25th at 5:00 PM. They will be required to enclose a 5% deposit, and that's, needs to be cash, cashier's check or certified check. The, the bid must be a qualified bid, which means that it has to be 10% of the first $1,000 and 5% of the remainder. So, for example, for the Old Senior Center, with the highest off, initial offer being $500, the next highest qualifying bid would be $550. For the Old Hotel Lot, with the highest initial offer being $22,500, the next qualifying bid would be $23,675. Of course, anyone can bid more than that, but they must at least bid that, those minimum amounts to be eligible. The, the final, we'll continue to get those bids in, and we'll continue that same process with 10 days until we stop getting bids. And once we do, we'll be back before you to authorize the final sale. The final sale needs to be, you know, in cash or cash equivalent, cashier's check, et cetera. If we do not receive any additional bids, then the resolution calls for the sale to be given to Chairman Kendrick and Mr. John Dixon. You, of course, have the right to reject any and all bids at any time during this process if you see fit. And the county attorney has advised me to let Chairman Kendrick know that there's an additional hoop that he must jump through if he is the, the winning bid, since he is our chairman. So, yes?
I think he's just, I think he's just unmuting himself when he thinks he's gotta talk.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Carry on.
Do y'all have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just wanna say that I wanna recuse myself from this and all of the vote.
Okay, you're good. Are you, are you, so, if you're ready to move forward, then we ask that you authorize the resolutions, and our clerk will begin the advertisement.
And we, we can reject it at any time.
Yes.
We can cancel the process at any time.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, you ought to have a motion to officially authorize Mr. Kendrick not to vote on this issue.
Motion to recuse Chairman Kendrick from the discussion. Emote. Say.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion as spoken, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Move to start process.
We have a motion to begin the process, sale of the two properties. In a discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Your next item?
Item number seven is Person County False Alarm Ordinance. Mr. Young?
Thank you. As all of you know, that several months ago, we have revisited the false alarm ordinance, mainly primarily with as a request from the volunteer fire departments in the county. When we looked at that, Mr. Tillman, Director of Inspections, wanted to research that and found that it was for commercial use alarms only, and wanted, with he and William Lingle, the fire inspector, did some research and did some long hours of work on this, reworked it, excuse me, and worked it where it could be residential also. I also wanna say that Sack's office also helped out on this too, with Mr. Lingle, and Mr. Tillman here did a good job on doing that. I would like to, to highlight a couple of things that the new ordinance or the, or the ordinance in general would be doing. I mentioned it would do residential and commercial, where previously it was just commercial. The system, the alarm system will be for fire alarms countywide. The fees and the enforcement will be with, through the inspections Department. And the timetable, this ordinance will define a timetable in which that process will take place, from the, from the first call that we receive to multiple calls and how that fee will be placed on that. And then, it also will define a, an appeal process. So, if a, if a resident gets a, a letter for a false alarm, they have an appeal process with that. So, these, this ordinance, as you see in front of you, have pretty much been worked out and through the system, checked it over, and ready for you all, any questions that you may have.
Who do they appeal to?
They will appeal to the inspections Department and the...
Chief of Police Inspector.
Yeah, and the Director of the Inspections will have the final say.
Now, when the fire departments brought this up to me a few, well, probably last year, I guess, I think this is already in place in the city, is that correct?
Yes.
Or something similar.
Yes, sir.
So, the next question that I'll get asked is, the fees, the fines, they will just go into the general fund? And then, will we keep up, or will they keep up with it, or will we try to reimburse them somehow for the running these false alarms if it gets too excessive or...
They'll, they'll be collected through the inspections Department as the enforcement, which does go into the general fund, but we can set up a tracking to reconcile at the end of the year if it's the wish of the board to allocate those funds back to the VFDs.
One of the departments, I think, that was running most of the false alarms, so they don't care if it goes in our general fund or what, they just wanna stop running those calls. But I know one department doesn't speak for all.
Sure.
And so, when we go, when we have our next meeting, which we just had one, I know that will come up when we tell them we've passed this ordinance. Will they get the money or will we? And so, I think if, you know, I don't know if we put it to them or do we make the decision that we're just gonna keep it, track it, or what? But either way, when we go back, I wanna tell them.
Yes, it's a decision of the Board of Commissioners to decide how you wanna allocate that, and we can bring that back during the budget process to let you know how much we've collected for the year and then reallocate those funds to the VFDs based on which departments...
So, since we're gonna have some legwork in this, being our inspections Department, it would be my suggestion, if it ain't, it's not too much paperwork hassle or Amy and all them, whatever, but if we track it, then I would suggest reimbursing them half of the fee.
Reimbance the inspections Department half? Or the...
Half stays in the general fund, half goes to the fire department that runs that false alarm call.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
I do. In the past year, we've collected one commercial, and the $50 you can see is for violations three to five, so we're not expecting...
Yeah, from my understanding, though, some of these residential, you know, because obviously, it's the, it's the homeowner's responsibility to call out somebody to fix their alarm. From my understanding, especially in the Timberlake community, they have run a lot of false alarms and maybe doing them have too, I'm not sure.
Sure.
But, so, we need something...
And you will see some of these in the Cepho area with the lake houses. A lot of what they're seeing here will be residents that are not here during the wintertime, and the alarm just go off and off and off, and they're not here. And, and just highlight that we are just talking about less than a handful a year.
Right.
When, past, when does this become effective? Is it immediate?
Tonight.
Okay?
Yeah.
It's unanimous.
And there will be, like Mr. Jeffrey said, there will be other departments touching this, but not on one center, which will be keeping up the data and doing research. Finance, tax, and inspections will be touching this.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman.
We have a motion to approve the request for the alarm ordinance. Any, any further discussion, discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion for the ordinance as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You still, you still with us?
If it's unanimous, it would pass tonight. If it's not, we'll need a second read.
You there, Tracy?
Yes, I'm here.
How, what was your vote on that?
Excuse me, I missed it.
Vote on the, the false alarm ordinance, your vote would be?
In favor of.
Thank you. Okay, so unanimous vote. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. John. Next is item number eight, draft of transfer station request for proposals. Miss Tate?
Hello again. I'm here before you to share with you a draft of the RFP. I wanna emphasize that this is a draft. It, it still needs quite a bit of input before it's ready to be released. And one thing I did wanna bring to your attention, before, again, before we release this RFP, it is staff's opinion that we need to go ahead and move forward with the permitting process. In my discussions with the state, we may be eligible to have a permit modification instead of a brand-new permit, but that is still up for discussion. Regardless, the permitting process takes quite a bit of time. The state is unwilling to give us a time estimate, because the information that is required for the permit process requires that it be shared with other departments, for example, a traffic study within DOT. And so, Dean or isn't, isn't willing to, you know, give us an estimate on how long it's gonna take the DOT to review a permit. to take the DOT to review a permit. That's just one piece of what would be required, and that's, that's just for the permit modification. So the minimum requirements that we would need, again, would be a, a traffic study. We need an erosion and sedimentation control study. We also need to have gone through the special use permit process because we have to provide proof that we have local ordinance approval as part of that permit modification. The special use permit process requires a site plan with topography, buildings, parking, buffer. All that information needs to be included. But most importantly, before we can move forward with the RFP, is we must have an updated operations plan. The operation plan, operations plan outlines how the transfer station is going to function on a day-to-day basis. That's things like how often the tank needs to be pumped out, how the tank needs to be cleaned, where the leachate is supposed to be taken and disposed of. Lots of details about how the transfer station needs to be operated. And the state has recommended that an engineer seal and sign that document as part of the, the permitting process. So again, before we move forward with the RFP, we need, we need to move forward with that permitting process.
And what is the cost of that process?
Well, if we have to get a brand new permit, it's somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars. If we're able to do simply the permit modification process, it will be less than that, but I'm not sure exactly what that is. Maybe twenty thousand dollars instead of twenty-five or thirty-five.
So it's going to cost to collect information?
It's going to cost to apply to have a permit to operate the transfer station. The state has to give us a permit before we can open the transfer station. And that process takes quite a bit of time, and the, you know, you can't, you can't really release the RFP until you have an operating plan. The operating plan explains how the transfer station is going to be operating on a day-to-day basis, which informs a bidder the type of work and the type of effort it's going to take to run the transfer station. So they're not going to be able to make a, a complete offer until they know all the details of how the transfer station needs to be run.
Is there any additional personnel? I mean, if, if you go forward with a transfer station, is the county going to have to hire any additional personnel?
We could outsource all of it if we wish. However, just at the transfer-
It's not what the RFP is. The RFP is not asking for information, nor if the county runs it, but we're also, we're trying to see if other businesses are interested or putting in bids to-
Yes.
Run this.
The way I've written the RFP, and this is not the only way to do it, but the way I've written the RFP currently, because I had to make some assumptions, was that you wanted to run the transfer station as it was previously run. The way it was previously run was that, I believe, Republic contracted for all of the, the actions that were taken at the landfill. So I wrote it in, in a way that all of the, all of the work there is outsourced. There are no county, there might not be any county employees at the landfill. It can all be outsourced. But now, that doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to be able to walk away completely. You know, we're going to have to have some internal staff who are going to provide some, some type of supervision. It's likely going to fall under, under Ray's department to, you know, to be a source of, of, you know, of answers for any questions that might arise at the transfer station because the county is still going to own the property. So we're, you know, it's not like we're, we're going to be able to walk away completely, have nothing to do with it.
Right, but the RFP, or the motion I made in the last meeting was not looking for information for the county to run it. We're looking for someone else that we could contract to operate that facility.
That's correct.
That, that has not been, that was not part of that motion was for the county to look at operating calls, hiring people, or anything that we were running as a Person County.
Right, and that's the way the RFP is written, is that there's an opportunity for a private entity to bid on the hauling. There's an opportunity for a private entity to bid on the, the day-to-day operations and also the scale house. So, but again, there's, you know.
But we have to spend twenty to thirty thousand dollars before we send out the RFP, is what you're saying?
To get the permit.
To get the permit.
Right. That's correct. Because we can't, you can't issue an RFP if you don't have that operations plan. The operations plan, again, it tells you in much more detail than an RFP can.
How much did we spend on a consultant last year?
I want to say it was sixty, seventy. Does that ring a bell?
Between sixty and seventy would be my guess.
We spent sixty and seventy last year to look at a negotiation to Republic that we didn't even go through with. So spending this to get the answer for me to see if this is a viable site for a transfer station, I see nothing wrong with it.
Well, the, the, the study that was done last year was to increase revenue for the county. This is not increasing revenue for the county.
It only increased revenue through increased tonnage of trash.
Increased revenue.
Our fees, I think, did not change very much, if they did at all, that we collect per ton or however we collected at the current regional landfill. The only way we was going to make more money off that landfill was by taking in two thousand tons of trash, which is almost fourteen hundred tons more than what we're taking in today. And so I had to tell someone that prior to coming to the meeting today, that when we went through those negotiations, we were not trying to make, we were not going to make money hands over fist with the current contract that we have in place with Republic. We were going to take in additional waste. I was making sure it was clear for everybody.
And I think it's, needs to be said, the magnitude of lost revenue that the county is going to be facing with this, I consider it to be absolutely catastrophic and detrimental to the county finance. And we're talking about increase in taxes. You can argue taxes haven't been increased in eleven years, fine, you can say that, but also you got to provide the cost of, someone's got to pay for that transfer station. And you can say, well, the transfer station is going to be paying for itself. Now you're passing that off to the consumers. You're passing it off to the, the, the service providers and flipping the cost to the, their customers, flipping the bill. Anytime you raise, raise the bill, it's going to drip down to the consumer.
All I've tried to do, and I know at least the past year, is look for ways to handle Person County's trash. I don't want, I'm tired of handling people's trash from a sixty-mile radius and beyond, which we know that we're getting down there. We just heard a report tonight of what our senior population will be. We know that we don't have many young families, if any, moving into Person County. If you look at this report here, and you look at what our expected population is to be by 2034, we're only going to grow from now to then by about eight hundred people. And my little time on this board, I would prefer for us to see ways of trying to improve the way of life in Person County, to attract some young families and new people to move into Person County. It's fine to say that we're going to work hard and try to attract jobs, but if you don't have a workforce for them, you're not going to have jobs. And with sixty-five and older being our population come 2030, forty, I don't know where they work, but you won't attract many manufacturing or high-technology type jobs to Person County if that's your workforce. And I don't think the way to attract young families or new people to move to Person County is being the landfill capital of North Carolina, which is what we're headed if we go to two thousand or more tons for the next ten to twenty or thirty years. And that's just been mine.
Well, I'm glad you brought up jobs, because we all talk about jobs, jobs, jobs. However, if you, that landfill closes, you're going to lose a major economic asset. Has anyone talked to the CEOs of our corporate citizens? Has anyone talked with U.S. Flea Cure Tobacco?
You know, I had to talk to them, because they don't live in Person County. They live in Broad Creek and Chapel Hill and everywhere else.
But they still-
People work, live here, but a few workers that they do hire here, because we do not have a viable, uh, way of life here. We don't have rec centers, we don't have pools, we don't have anything for our citizens to do. They have to go out of town to do everything.
But I'm talking, so-
So that's why our CEOs live in Broad Creek and Raleigh and Chapel Hill and Durham. So maybe we got to go there and meet lunch with one of them over at Tobacco Warehouse and talk to them, because they're not eating lunch here.
Well, that's kind of funny, because I actually ran into the CEO of U.S. Flea Cure Tobacco. I mean, not the CEO, but the president of the local plant here. And when I talked about it, he was kind of, you know, he was kind of taken aback because that's going to impact their bottom line. And that's the reason I requested for Stewart to go and do a survey, a survey after, with a majority support on this board, to get input from Duke, GKN, Eden, U.S. Flea Cure, and our other corporate citizens to find out how this is going to impact them.
Well, we should be asking, how is sixty-five and older, over fifty-four percent of our population by 2030 being sixty-five and older, how's that going to impact them? Are they going to stay? That's what we should be asking. That's going to affect your bottom line, not having a workforce, way before traveling a few more miles down the road to dump your trash.
Well, we got to pay for that, Ray.
That's true.
And, and it's coming from the tax dollars.
I've been one that's, that's willing to spend a little money on Person County's future. A viable future, though.
I voted right, I voted right with you with the senior center, didn't I?
Not a rec senior center. Our citizens voted two thousand eight for us to do a rec senior center.
Well-
You've been adamantly against that.
They seem, the seniors seemed quite happy on the report that we got.
But not the rec, not the youth, not the one sixty and under. Not me.
Well, you know, there, there was a time in which I was in the minority on this board, and, and it couldn't get done.
Well, yeah, you know, look, I told Larry Yawbro, the guy I ran, I've been in the minority all my life, and they would use that as an excuse.
Okay, so we've spent seventy thousand already?
Yes, that was for the study-
And now another twenty.
Well, and the study also, just for clarification, did look at all other options. That was part of what you asked the consultant to look at. And so the projections that we had used for the transfer station actually came from that consultant's study. It wasn't just the negotiation piece. That was the recommended after he looked at all of your other options.
Well, I think, you know, the, the request in the beginning was for information to help us make an informed decision.
Right.
And, and that appears that we're going to have to go another twenty-plus thousand, whatever it is, to even get information. And I think that backs us into a corner as a board and in a position where we don't, don't want to be, don't need to be. It takes away your reasoning abilities and logic. It puts us in a place where we're spending more money without any guaranteed outcomes. And we've had examples of that, where we had the cart before the horse. And I, I don't see spending that money. I don't know what our option is otherwise, but I don't see spending the extra money at this point without any guaranteed results. And we, you know, it's just-
Well, the result would be that you would, in the end, you would have a permit to operate the transfer station.
Yeah, but then we may not approve the transfer station. So that's what I'm-
There's a lot of hoops to go through to get, you know, I think as we worked through this, it was revealed that an RFP process is not the best way to gather information, because you're asking businesses to take their resources and time to serve your transfer station, and we can't even tell them whether or not we're going to have a transfer station. So that's really not the appropriate vehicle for information gathering. It just got much more complicated when you have to go through the state permitting process. So as we've talked to other communities who have transfer stations, they have employed consultants to do studies, to gather price data, tonnage amounts, you know, the kind of information that you would want is really more of an additional study than it is a request for proposals from a private business.
And that, I mean, the data that you have is pretty comprehensive. I mean, you've got the estimated cost of the tipping fee. You've got the estimated tonnage that would come to the transfer station. I mean, you've got quite a bit of information.
Either way, if the county ran it, which is not what I'm saying, or we, we're not doing, we're not going out for a request for proposals because they only last so many days, and we don't know if the permit will come back with that many days, we have to go through the whole process again.
Yes.
But we don't even know if that site could be used for a transfer station until we get permitted. Is that what I'm hearing? So even if we go out and find some site where no one lives around it out in Woodsdale on the Virginia line, it still has to be permitted just like this site or any other site.
That's correct.
So, pretty much, if we don't do anything, it's just continued lack of leadership on this issue from this board.
And how long has that been going on?
Quite a while, since I've been here.
Do you want to speak to that one?
I mean, we're just kicking the can down the road. We'll just keep doing a year extension until we out ten years and none of us are here, and we just kicked it on down to the next board, because we don't want to stand up and make a decision.
Well, I'd be glad to make a decision.
We know what your decision is.
All right.
And you know what mine is.
Yeah, but don't, but don't sit here, Ray, don't sit here that we're not willing to, we're not willing to speak out on what we think is right.
You just mentioned that you were in the minority prior, couldn't do anything about it. Now you're in the majority, and y'all are still not doing anything about it. You don't, you're not extending the contract with Republic, you're not looking at ways to take the Person County's trash. We're just doing, kicking it down the road. That's all we're doing.
Got a senior senior pass, too.
And you, and you, you know, so, yeah, but they still, I bet this week, last week, they had, they had to walk in the rain to go there and eat their meals because you wouldn't need a proof of them to have their awning going across the building to building. So it's easy to say, it's easy to say that just, you know, we did something just because you're the majority.
Yes, I actually asked Ron today-
We could have used that three hundred thousand dollars that you lost over the Huxansbury Design Project, and that would have been helpful.
Yeah, you're right. Thanks to the city of Roxborough, too, with that.
It's good debating, Ray.
I enjoy it every time.
I asked Ron about doing nothing, what the ramifications of, of not doing, you know, either of these two options. And so he, he's done a little research, and we've had some further development with the legislation that we've been talking about is actually on the governor's desk right now, which would take away, you know, the limitation on where trash could, could come from. Do you want to speak to that?
Do you want me to speak to that, Mr. Chairman?
At least shed some information.
I guess a real option, then, you know that there are two you've been talking about, landfill here, transfer station here, one and two. Third option is do nothing. What, what is the law with regard to doing nothing? First, before we get there, the manager mentioned legislation passed by the General Assembly. That legislation is pending before the governor. If the governor vetoes, it could very well be overridden, as most of his vetoes have been overridden. That legislation prohibits a county or city from directing the flow of waste. Current law is, you can say, you can pass an ordinance, a rule, that says all the waste in Person County, maybe including the city, that's another question, but all the waste must be delivered to a set place. This new law, quite honestly, I believe, enacted at the behest of the waste companies, says you cannot direct it. It may go to any licensed, permitted waste facility. So if this legislation is finally enacted, you've lost some power to direct the flow of the waste. Keep that in mind as I talk to you about what, if you do nothing. There is a law that says that a county ought to provide for a way to dispose of solid waste in the county. It ought to do, ought, no, no, I didn't say shall, I said it ought to provide a way for disposal of waste. It ought to take into consideration the health and environmental considerations in doing so. As I look at that legislation, it is, it seems to me it can be very strongly argued that it just says you ought to do the right thing. It doesn't say you got to do it. It says you ought to do it. So I think, pretty sure I can do further research, but I'm pretty sure that an option for you is to do nothing. Neither have a transfer station nor a landfill in the county. In effect, what that would be doing is saying to a city, we only have one city, Roxborough, collecting trash, you find a place to dispose of that trash. It might be in Virginia, you might haul it to Granville County, you might haul it to Orange County, you might haul it to Durham County. And private haulers, you'd be saying, you find a place to dispose of the waste you pick up. There are many considerations around that. If you do nothing and you say dispose of it however you can find it, there's a good chance you're going to have some woods paths where people are going to dump the trash in the woods somewhere. So you're going to have some potential environmental problems. But I think it is an option you can choose if you want to, considering the fact that there will likely be environmental and health consequences of that. The law says you got to have a plan to dispose of it. No, it doesn't say. It says you ought to have a plan to dispose of it, but there are really no sanctions for your failure to do so. to do so. I, I hope, I hope what I've tried to say is you do have an option to do nothing, and there are consequences of doing nothing, but the law, the state law is, does not have any sanctions for your failure to provide for either a landfill or a transfer station.
So we can let them both close and just let Burn Barrel, you can haul if you want to, you can dump it on my farm, you can do whatever you wanna do with it.
I don't recommend it.
I think, I think you can do that. I said there are no sanctions. There have been lawsuits in other situations where concerned citizens bring a lawsuit to try to create through the courts a sanction, and say, you gotta do it. But there are no sanctions in the current law, it just says, you really ought to do that.
Mr. Chairman, how much motion it would proceed with the permitting process?
Motion made to proceed with the permitting process. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
No.
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 Okay, number three, two, got that, okay, ready, okay. Okay. Chairman's report for Tracy. Um, next item is chairman's report. If Chairman Tracy were allowed to comment?
Yeah, I appreciate y'all accommodating me tonight. Uh, I'm down in South Carolina at Anderson helping with Hurricane Restorations. Uh, have plans to leave here after a couple of days and go on into Florida, so y'all keep these people with mind down here, and hopefully we'll get our four hundred and fifty people down here, get the lights on and, and back home without any injuries or illness. And with that, I appreciate everything that you did to let me in on this, and I will see you guys in two or three weeks, and I'm all cut out right now, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jefferson?
Hi.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Man, you're...
I just wanted to mention that there's a substance abuse summit being held this Sunday, I mean, this Wednesday. I don't know why I said Sunday. This Wednesday, the thirteenth, Upstairs Kirby. It's from eleven to twelve, the Good Morning Coffee Hour. It's also focused on the substance abuse issue here in Person County, and we also have a training in between for those who work with clients who potentially have substance abuse issues. So wanted to make you aware of that, and lunch is served if you join us from eleven to twelve at the summit. Thank you.
Mr. Jefferson?
Uh, wanted to mention our environmental committee met Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then we want to mention that the Helena Elementary School Environmental Club, along with a group of local volunteers, is planning a farm-to-fork-style dinner on Monday, September twenty-fifth at the Helena Elementary School. It'll be a three-course dinner that will feature a menu created by executive chef Kyle Woodson of Harlan, like Papa Hall's Kitchen. The menu will be made up of dishes created using ingredients from Person County farms. Tickets are twenty-five dollars each. You can get those from Helena Elementary School or the Farm-to-Home Market in Hall's Way.
What's the date on the...
Uh, September twenty-fifth.
September twenty.
And then in May of this year, Helena was awarded a grant from the NC Green Power, a Raleigh-based nonprofit, which focuses on improving our state's environmental, environment by supporting renewable energy. The grant, which requires matching funds from the school, will provide up to ten thousand dollars towards the purchase of a solar panel, panel array. The solar array is expected to produce enough energy to power at least five classrooms. The system will also be used for instructional purposes. And then also wanted to mention, Thursday, two o'clock, Seymour Fire Department will be having a fire engine dedication for their new fire truck. And that's all I have.
Mr. Clayton?
Couple of things I wanted to mention, was, one of them was Patriot Day ceremony that they had Saturday over here at the Veterans Park. I hope they'll continue to do that each year. That was quite impressive. Uh, it was pretty moving, and I think if you were not there and you get a chance to go next year when they have it, it would certainly be a good thing for you to do. It was, uh, I think it was done very well, and I wanna commend everybody that was involved in that. It kinda appeared to me, and I may be all wrong, that it looked like the chief tour in with the fire department was the one that was kinda spearheading that, and I don't know who was doing it, but it was, uh, it was quite a, quite a good ceremony. The Carter Annual Banquet is the twenty-eighth, I believe, isn't it? Any of you all would like to go to that? It's gonna be at the Bant Scrabble Community College, I believe, this year, so I'll be vice chair of that this year, as far as I know. They hadn't kicked me out yet. And I would like to thank all of the people that were here tonight, and I mentioned it to them while they were here, but with the Carter Council of Governments. A lot of times we don't realize what some of these agencies do in the county, and they do a lot of things. They involved in your workforce development, they're involved in your, some of your housing rehabilitation stuff, they're involved in the senior center, so they do quite a bit in Person County, and a lot of times it, it kinda goes unknown, because they're a regional organization, and a lot of that money comes into all of these five counties through a regional organization, it didn't come directly to the counties. I think that's all I had, it's probably not, but I don't, I think that's enough.
And just to re, wanna reemphasize on what Jimmy just said, I had an opportunity to attend the, the expansion ceremony for the workforce development with Carter in Granville County. Had a chance to take the tour and meet some very, very fine people, and it, if you have an opportunity to do so, it's sure, it, they really do put a lot of effort into having an economic impact in our region. Also, the twenty-ninth of this month, the museum is holding a art ga, uh, not art gala, but a two-hundred-twenty-fifth anniversary celebration of Person County, and, and if you're interested in going, please, uh, contact the museum and get, get some tickets, 'cause I'm sure it's gonna be a great event.
I would just like to add what Commissioner Clayton said about the Patriots' Day Saturday, quite a moving ceremony and, uh, very, very worthwhile, well-attended, well-spoken, and, and by all means, those responsible, continue this, 'cause I think we as adults would remember, but one of the biggest challenges we would have is keeping our children informed about those who have lost their lives and committed to the freedom that we enjoy. So carrying on the history of what happened there and saying that we will never forget, we shouldn't let them forget as well. I, too, attended the workforce development meeting in Oxford at that Commissioner Perry spoke of. That is quite, quite an organization that has an awful lot to offer to business and industry, and they're willing, they're able. I just wonder at times, do we utilize them as much as we should here in the county? And, and I don't really know. I don't, but they, they were, again, they're willing, and they do a tremendous job, and could be a huge asset if it's not being utilized in the county, but I certainly hope business and industry will take advantage of, of what they have to offer in the way of service. I have no further comments. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Um, papers say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Might want to stay longer?